Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the League of Women Voters Oof Second Week Third Night One and Only Candidate Forum for this evening. This is of our 2020 general election. I'm Andy Polley, I'm the current president of your local League of Women Voters, and I have just a few quick reminders before we get started. Mail-in ballots went out on Friday. If you received your mail-in ballot, you can turn it into a secure Dropbox located throughout the county. You can check the supervisor of Elections website to find out where those locations are, or you can drop it off at one of their offices, there are four of them in our county. If you would still like to request a mail-in ballot, you can do so through October 24th, but you may want to do it as soon as possible because you still want to be able to get it back, because it has to be there by Election Day. Early voting starts on October 19th. There are five locations throughout the county where any St. Lucie County voter can vote, regardless of where you live. It's the same five locations that were available to you during the primary election. Election Day itself is November 3rd. If you choose to vote on Election Day, you must vote at your voting precinct. Let's see, to learn more about the candidates that you're going to hear from tonight and all of the candidates on your ballot, please visit vote411.org. The questions that we'll pose this evening are different than the questions that we posed on Vote 411, so you can learn even more about these candidates and all the candidates on your ballots, as well as the six amendments that appear on your ballot. Tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates running for County Commissioner District 1. The format for this forum is the same as all the other forums, 90-second introduction for each candidate, followed by a series of questions, two minutes to answer each question, and then a two-minute closing for each candidate. The rotation of candidates was determined by coin toss earlier, so we're all set and ready to go with that. This is a candidate forum, this is not a debate, so the candidates will not invoke one another during this discussion. The candidates will be alerted at 30 seconds and when their time has expired, so you'll see little flashes in the screen, and so will they. Our moderator for the forums is Carol Wyatt. Carol is the owner and co-owner and operator, sorry Greg, co-owner and operator of radio stations WPSL in Fort St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. She's the president of the WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County, a former president, past president of the Rotary Club of Fort St. Lucie, and a member of the Fort St. Lucie Businesswomen. She's been in broadcasting for a long time, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We are, as always, honored to have Carol as our moderator, and so I'm going to kick it over to her.
Well, thank you, Andy, and welcome to another League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum. We thank the members of the League, as always, for developing the questions for this evening. We thank the candidates for participating, and we thank you for informing yourselves about the general election in what is still a challenging year. This evening, St. Lucie County Commission District 1, taking in the northeastern part of the county. It's for a term of four years. It is a county-wide race, and it is a partisan race. So our candidates, the incumbent Chris Zdowski, a Democrat, the challenger Ryan Collins, Republican. And by our predetermined coin toss, Ryan Collins will start off with opening statements. Mr. Collins?
Hey, good evening. Thanks for the introduction, Carol. Appreciate the League of Women Voters holding this to get our information across, and thank you for any viewers out there to educate themselves. My name is Ryan Edward Collins, I'm a lifelong resident of Fort Pierce and St. Lucie County. I've worked in construction, insurance, and now do real estate. I live here with my wife, high school sweetheart from John Carroll High School, and we have two kids. So I've been involved in many civic organizations, civic boards in Fort St. Lucie and Fort Pierce, and I've also been a past president for the Rotary Club of Fort St. Lucie. I'm looking forward to working for the people of St. Lucie County. I want to bring a different approach, I want to get us back to the basics, focus on the things that matter most to us as residents and business owners here in the community. I feel that there's a lot of things that can be done to improve our infrastructure by getting out of bad investments and focusing on those basics that will lead to us to reduce our tax rates and get us to where we need to be on a fitting end to the Treasure Coast. I'm always open for discussion, anybody that would like to reach out to me, please do so. I welcome speaking with anybody in the community. It's been a very good experience, getting to know more people, getting to learn more about the county and what the citizens' needs are, and I want to bring those needs and those requests to the Board of County Commissioner as a good representative of them on the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and now opening statement, Mr. Zdowski.
Do we have a mute issue, or?
How's that? Is that better?
Yes, there we go.
Okay, let's try that again. Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for the forum, I appreciate it. I'm Chris Zdowski, and you know me for my fiscal responsibility, environmental stewardship, and economic development measures countywide. As I seek reelection, I'm reminding of the significant challenges that St. Lucie County faced since I took office in 2008, starting with $11 billion in property losses and value, which resulted in many, many thousands of foreclosures. We approached that crisis with an immediate budget reduction and strong economic efforts to diversify and focus on job creation by private investors. I'm battle-tested with the budget. The concerns back then were the recession, hurricanes, unemployment. Unemployment was 16.9% back in 2009, and then most recently, we had blue-green algae and cyanobacteria that was lapping our shores, and now a COVID-19 pandemic. So some of the things that we did since my time in office, we cut the budget by over $100 million, streamlined government, we improved efficiencies and lowered the millage rate this year as we reached equilibrium through strong budgetary efforts. I'm Chris Zdowski, and I'm running for reelection. I hope that you'll look at all of the issues between us and check out my website at ChristopherCommissioner.com. I'm looking forward to the rest of the forum.
Okay, well then we'll proceed. We'll start the first question with Ryan Collins, and after that, we will rotate who goes first on each question. So for Mr. Collins, "St. Lucie County homeowners recently received their annual trim notices. If the proposed budget changes are accepted, many will see another increase in their property taxes. St. Lucie County already has an average property tax rate higher than 88% of counties in America. What will you do to reduce the tax burden to citizens?"
Yeah, great question. That's been one of the biggest concerns that I've spoke with people about before and during this campaign. One of the things that I think to start off is that we've missed an opportunity. We've had eight straight years of increased property value. That means that we've taken in more taxpayer dollars than budgeted. I believe that should have been used to reduce the millage rate a little bit each year, time over time, to get us down from being the highest average tax rate in the state of Florida. So that's the first part of it. You know, going back and using the metric of 2017, I don't think, or 2007, I'm sorry, I don't think is a fair metric to use. In our businesses, many in our households, we went through the same periods, and we're able to adapt and we move forward. We can't keep looking back to it. So the trick is to find long-term solutions, I believe, by getting to the basics, like I said before, focusing on things like our roads, our infrastructure, and getting out of bad investments and getting out of things that only give a favor to a small part of our population. I think we could actually see tangible results, and by staying out of those, we're able to decrease taxes over time. Infrastructure should be a priority. There's a lot of things that we should move towards as far as finding alternative revenue, lowering costs on the county's budget, as far as consolidating some of the facilities that we have throughout the county, and then being able to sell some of that land to generate property value from that, property tax value revenues from that, and just have long-term solutions and be proactive rather than reactive to a lot of our problems here.
Okay, same question to Mr. Zdowski. What will you do to reduce the tax burden on citizens?
Well, as I stated in my opening comments, we've reduced the budget by $100 million since I took office, and then this past year, we reduced it by 23.9 million, and we reduced the millage this year by 1.25%. What's interesting is, is that those will say that it's the highest millage aggregate, but they also try to say that it's the highest taxes. Well, it's not the highest taxes in the state, quite frankly. Tax Watch does a review of all the tax issues in the county. St. Lucie County only has 39% of the millage total of 22.5% of that, the county's millage is only 8.6, and we reduced it again, one-tenth of a mil this year. It's argued that, you know, other communities have lowered their millage rate four years running. Well, they raised it by one full mil in 2015, and have only reduced it one-tenth of a mil since. So if you raise the millage by 20%, and then reduce it by one-tenth of a percent, it takes 10 years to reduce it from the entire mil that you placed on it. So what's happening here is you're being told that this is all the county's budget and all the county's millage, and it's just not. 39% of the millage has come from the county. So we've reduced it, we continue to reduce our budget, and we streamline government, and we've done a great job at that. What's more, is we've been able to increase the property values. There was a time when properties were going into foreclosure simply because somebody bought their property one year, and two or three years later, it was worth less than half or a quarter. Those folks had to give up their homes. So today, we're very proud that we've increased the values and making sure our economic engines are going full steam.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Chris Zdowski. COVID-19 has impacted St. Lucie County in many ways, beginning with the economy. What will you do to help business and workers recover from lost revenue, lost wages, lost businesses, and unemployment?
We have, we have actually been able to, due to the federal funding through the COVID-19 process, we have been able to receive, or projected to receive, $55 million to actually implement in saving small businesses, keeping businesses open, and providing for the recovery, that which will be the COVID-19 recovery in this year. The other side of that is being able to use masks, face masks for businesses to stay open. There are some out there who say, "Let's not use masks," because of whatever reasoning. But we need to protect each other from the COVID-19 virus so that businesses can stay open, and we can have an economy. It wasn't that long ago when we had 17.9% unemployment due to COVID. Because of our efforts in reducing the infection rates and being able to open businesses, we've reduced that unemployment rate now to down below 7%. So all of those elements are coming into place. We continue to find ways to streamline opportunities for business to get in business, and our permitting department is going gangbusters because we've reduced the opportunities for challenges and slowing down the process. So businesses getting into business faster, businesses are open and staying open, and people are staying safer because of the measures we put in place to protect life, health, and safety.
Okay, same question to Mr. Collins, helping businesses and workers recover in COVID-19.
Sure, yeah, it's been a big topic as well, and I know, I think the first step is, what the governor came out with the other day is to allow businesses to reopen. We need to get back towards it and count on people to stay safe in their own way, how they feel they should stay safe, whether it's staying at home, whether it's social distancing, whether it's wearing a mask. We should be able to open up the businesses and allow them to choose what they feel are the proper measures that they need to take to run their business. We need to do, as a government, what we can do is effectively communicate what the risks are versus what is set up. We need to make sure that they understand what protocols we recommend to be in place, and we recommend that they follow them, and as they see fit, they can institute them. They're all dealing with their own liability insurance and everything as well. So as far as mandating things closing down, I think we need to get away from that, encourage them to open back up while educating them on the risk and what's involved with it. And we need to encourage, there's a lot of business owners that I speak with that aren't aware of the CARES Act and the money that's available through the county for struggling businesses. So I think there could be more done there as far as reaching out to businesses, doing a better advertising campaign to say that this money is available, "Come get it," because of my understanding, if we don't use it by the end of the year, then we lose that money. So we need to make sure that that's done. As far as the mask, I've had many, many business owners reach out to me. They don't know how to enforce it, they feel like that the enforcement's put on them. There hasn't been any citations issued by any law enforcement bodies within the county. So I think getting away from that and leaving the personal responsibility up to citizens and businesses is an important thing.
Okay, let's move to the next question. We'll come back with Ryan Collins. "The impact to the economy will have long-term effects on our community, and less taxpayer money means less tax revenue. How will you manage responsibility with greater need for county services with less money?"
Sure. I think the biggest probably deficit that we're going to find in the county budget is sales tax revenue is going to be down. So adjusting to that, I don't think it's going to be as big as a hit as it could have been, and I think we're more isolated from other larger cities in Florida and in the country. So we are going to have to expect a little bit of a hit on that, but I don't think it's going to be that severe as far as sales tax. You know, we've seen growth still occurring, construction really didn't slow down during COVID-19 as far as new construction for commercial projects and residential. All those companies have been very busy. There's many, many residents coming into the area. I work as a real estate agent, so I know we have a very large influx of people coming from the northeast that finally said that they're ready to make that move, and this was the final kind of push to get them here. So we're embracing all those people to come here, to keep our property values rising, and continue on with lowering the tax as well. Growth is going to continue. I think one of the biggest things we need to look at is redeveloping our tourism, restructuring what we do with the revenues that come in for tourism, and allow for more projects to do. For example, the new project slated for Midway Road that the City of Fort Pierce Commission approved the other day, that's a great driver. It's good to see projects like that that are coming here. It's affordable for them to do it, and it's a great midway point between Miami and Orlando. So we really have a market that we need to push there, and we need to make sure that the revenues coming in from that are being spent in the right place that citizens and businesses can see a tangible difference.
Okay, Mr. Zdowski, same question, managing greater need for county services with less money.
Well, the good news is, I've already done this at least once. In 2008, '09, of course, we lost a huge, as I said earlier, $11 billion in taxable value. My first budget, we had to cut $54 million from the budget. We streamlined 21 departments down to nine. We reduced the employees' element by 350 employees. We had to do more with less. We combined, as I said, the jobs for each of the individuals, and our staff responded. I suspect that they'll do the same, should that be asked of them. We put ourselves in a good place financially because we did a five-year budget, and we maintained our positioning with the budget over the last five years, reducing it every year. And then, of course, because we were able to put money in reserves, we were able to lower the millage rate this year, and again, as I said, reduce the budget by 23.9%. All of those elements are things that I've done in the past as a board of county commissioner, but as importantly, being able to secure the support from the other board members for the cuts that would be necessary. And some of the other challenges here is, it was said that the half-cent sales tax was a driver. It is a driver, and it's helping us to fix all of the unfinished projects that were left off during the recession. So those projects are being done at a quick rate, so those maintenance projects will be back up and running, and so it'll give us some time to recover from any loss of revenue. So we continue to be fiscally responsible, we continue to move on economic development options, which provides jobs to stimulate the economy and recycle that money countywide.
Okay, coming back to Mr. Zdowski for the next question. "The pandemic is not over, we are entering cold and flu season. What will you do to protect the health and safety of all of St. Lucie County's residents?"
I think we're doing it just now as we speak. Of course, with the facial coverings option that people are taking advantage of and doing the right things, social distancing, as well as the CDC guidelines with sanitizing their hands, washing of the hands, all of those elements are proving to be very, very efficient in reducing the infection rates. Of course, the Health Department, we work with generally for vaccinating our community, those who choose to vaccinate, and we prepare through a medical process. We have Cleveland Clinic, we have Longwood Regional, and St. Lucie Medical, all of which are high-end, very quality medical facilities, and we take our actions from them when it comes to medical responses and how to prevent and/or to subdue any flu outbreak. But our big issue here, of course, is going to be any upticks that may come from the general opening of our community through the COVID-19 pandemic."
Okay, same question to Ryan Collins. What will you do to protect the health and safety of all of St. Lucie County residents?
Sure. I think a big thing, I believe, is personal responsibility. I think by now, people have been able to educate themselves on what to do as far as washing their hands more frequently, social distancing when you can, wearing a face covering if you'd like to, deciding not to go to certain places and weighing the risk of that. So I think people by this point, by and large, understand what the virus is, what their risks are when they do go out. So I think allowing people to make their own decisions is a big thing. One thing that I think that we've missed past, the county commission and other parts of the county, promoting social distances, mandating the mask, and, you know, promoting other health things, we've really kind of missed, you know, health and wellness and nutrition. You know, to be healthy, take vitamins to boost your immune system, get out and walk, get sunshine, things like that that will prevent you from getting sick as easy. So I think we could do more as far as outreach in the communities to say, "This is a good idea as well, what you're doing, but let's step it up. Let's add another element to this to say, 'These are other good things that you can do to be healthy.'" You know, see if we can get private sector or our service organizations to donate their time and their expertise as well, you know, with hospitals, medical physicians and things like that to go out and promote these healthy ways of life, and encourage personal protection and responsibility. You know, luckily, we haven't seen any huge spikes with schools. My wife's a teacher, they've been in school now for several weeks, and no real issues to speak of, so I think we're moving past this at this point, so thank you.
Okay, next question, we come back to Mr. Collins. "St. Lucie County's infrastructure, being quite old in some areas, is often overwhelmed during heavy rains and hurricanes. That abundance of unmanaged water can have devastating effects on roads, buildings, and other structures, as we hear rain falling right now, as well as sewer and drainage systems. What steps will you take to modernize the county's infrastructure that mitigates the impact of intense water events and is environmentally responsible?"
Sure. The simple answer to that is set those as a priority. I believe in the county commission position, the job description as it's set up in the state of Florida is to provide those things for infrastructure. So I think we've gotten away from that as a priority, and we need to get back to that and say, "Let's focus on the basics, let's get these things right before we get into investments and before we start picking winners and losers of certain things that may or may not drive our economy." So setting those as the priority, I think, is the big thing, being proactive instead of reactive. There's many parts of the county that we could identify, you know, today with the huge rain event, I've drove through many, many flooded streets, that's an issue. It doesn't allow people to get around as easy, it doesn't allow businesses to get where they need to go, so we need to identify those areas and take care of those first. The half-cent sales tax, you know, that was citizens like myself recognizing the need and the neglect of the infrastructure, and nobody likes to pay more taxes, but we saw it was necessary because these things weren't getting done because they were put on the back burner. So now that we've identified that the need is there, we need to set the priority and, you know, using funds that we use towards other investments, like I said before, using those funds towards what our citizens and businesses have an actual tangible, noticeable difference in our community, in our county, is going to be the biggest thing. So get what's right in your job description first, and then you can move on from there, is the way that I would like to approach the job as county commissioner.
Hey, Mr. Zdowski, "County's infrastructure modernization while environmentally responsible."
Can you repeat that? You cut out.
Oh, okay, sorry. It is raining pretty hard.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We talked about the county's infrastructure is often overwhelmed, the abundance of water has devastating effects. What steps will you take to modernize the county's infrastructure that both mitigates the impact of intense water events and is environmentally responsible?
Well, thank you for the question, because this is what I've been doing since day one. My first day in office, I came in to talk to Don West from our drainage group over there in engineering, and we moved forward with the Indian Hills Stormwater Project, which created a 25,000-acre expansion to an old sand mine off Savannah Road. That was built out over a three-year period. It now takes hundreds of millions of gallons of water out of the system. It treats it before it ever gets into the Indian River Lagoon. There's an alum treatment that goes with it that removes the contaminants and flocculent that removes the tannins from the water, and it's a, has BMATs to actually pick up and remove the nutrients from the water as well. And that was in partnership with the City of Fort Pierce. Not long after that, we had a partnership with the City of Fort St. Lucie for the Platts Creek Stormwater Treatment Area, which created and recreated wetlands to remove hundreds of thousands of gallons out of the Citrus-Sager and Bell Avenue system. Moving that forward, we did a congressional move. We had to go to the federal government to remove congressional oversight of the Ten Mile Creek Reservoir. We turned it over to South Florida Water Management District and is now working. They invested $8 million to make the system work, and now hundreds of millions of gallons of water are taken out of the system, the Ten Mile Creek, going through their reservoir and stormwater treatment area to remove the contaminants from the water as well as holding water. There are a number of other ones that are occurring. We're doing a Oxbow Reconnection at the Becker Property off Savannah Road, I'm sorry, Savannah Road, and that'll help open up the floodplain to the south on the Ten Mile Creek, which will remove water from the system as well. And there's a number of other ones, I don't have enough time to go through it all, but there's many, many projects underway and those that have been completed.
Okay, another related question, we'll start with Mr. Zdowski. "St. Lucie County has a very delicate and intricate environment, part of its appeal to tourists, its residents, and the local economy. What initiatives will you implement to reduce harm to the water, air, wildlife, and ecological system while mitigating the inevitable impacts of climate change?"
Well, all of these things are going in place. I already mentioned some of the efforts right there that actually remove the contaminants from the waterways. efforts right there that actually remove the contaminants from the waterways. We also initiated removing Dynamite Point, or some people call it the Cove, off the inlet. We renovated an entire island over there to make it more acceptable for environmental opportunities for folks to visit it. We did the same thing with Wesley's Island. We took it over from the state so that our community could actually enjoy it. We created a resiliency team in our Environmental Resources Department, and they are looking at every effort within the county to create resiliency projects, working with state and federal governments as well as local governments. We held seminars and opportunities for local government to get together and talk about the challenges that they see. We continue to work with all of the agencies, and most recently, the Marine Resources Council to the north of us in the Indian River Lagoon. And we shared information about what our resources and our opportunities for resiliency are. We are on top of that. That's something we've worked on since I came in office, and we continue to do so today.
And Ryan Collins, reducing harm to the environment while mitigating the inevitable impact of climate change?
Sure, absolutely. I think it goes off of the last answer I had as far as putting infrastructure as a priority, because it's certainly part of our infrastructure. Any damage done to the river, we have a direct adverse effect too. So the river's in trouble, we're all in trouble. So we need to put that as a priority, absolutely. We, you know, there's many areas that have been identified as needing work done to curb pollution to our rivers. The River Park area, for example, you know, constantly coming up with a no-swimming warning in that area. And that's due to be, due to the septic systems that are there need to be converted to sewer. You know, from this rain, I'm sure they'll go back out and test next month. And we're going to see those elevated levels of bacteria again. And it's just going to be a reoccurring thing that happens over and over again. And that's one of the examples of something that's already been identified. So we need to set that as a priority to say, you know, we're not going to be able to do the big steps. The major funding is going to need to come from state and federal government. But things like that, we should be able to pay for and take care of in our community here. It's a tangible difference. It's measurable. People are going to see the results from that, and it's going to stop the pollution at the levels that we can stop it at. The other big thing is beach erosion. You know, we spend $10,000 a day, I think it is here in the county, from sand constantly eroding. So FPNL is doing a project now where they place large concrete domes in front of it. Hopefully, those have good results, and we can piggyback off that as well. You know, I think if you claim to be an environmentalist, then you need to put your priorities and you need to put your policy and direct the funding to what you're really trying to do to impact the environment.
Okay. The next question comes back to Ryan Collins. It's a two-part question. How will you attract new businesses to St. Lucie County? And then, how will you encourage residents to start their own small business?
Sure. It's a great, great, great question. I've been involved in small business early on in my career, and I continue. I still work for myself. I work the real estate company, but I'm self-employed. Everything's on me. So I know what it is to start a business. I know the struggles that you go through and the red tape that you have to get through. So I think removing as many of those barriers as possible, being more business-friendly is a good start. Lower taxes, of course, will create more opportunities for businesses to want to buy property and build property here. Better infrastructure. Also, it all comes back to that. Businesses want to come here when there's good roads, there's good access. So we need to focus on that. That'll organically attract them. Training and education is a big thing. We need to, you know, have a more improved workforce. Anything we can do in conjunction with the school board, any of the local businesses to identify those trainings and get those out there is going to be a big step towards creating a better workforce, a more attractive workforce for industries and private companies that want to come here. And promote current proven businesses. You know, proven businesses that are here, kind of, you know, I feel sometimes, and they feel, I've heard from them, that they feel like, you know, new industry is coming. They get all the tax benefits. They get most of what's offered out there as far as tax abatements and things like that. So we need to focus on the companies that are here that are proven, that already have created jobs, that are involved in charitable organizations and things like that, and nurture those for growth. And from there, you know, by doing all those things, I don't think that we have to worry about creating jobs from a government standpoint, but create the best environment for them to come, and they will.
Okay, same two-part question to Chris Zdowski. How will you attract new businesses to St. Lucie County? And how will you encourage residents to start their own small business?
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to point out the Economic Development Council of St. Lucie County, there's a huge investment that we make, huge, just small in general terms, approximately $250,000 annually to go along with their membership, that actually provides for guidance and opportunity for getting through into business faster. We've worked with the Chamber of Commerce of St. Lucie County, as well as the building associations, as well as developers, to understand where the challenges have been in the past. We've reduced the issues getting into business. We have speed to market. That's a huge opportunity for us. And a couple of our local businesses that have expanded, such as Maverick Boats, 200,000-square-foot expansion, from application to shovel in the ground was six months. We learned through that process, and we worked with Pursuit, a local company, which was six weeks in the process. Six weeks, that's right, six weeks. And they ended up a shovel in the ground, and they have finished their building well under time. And they built a 400,000-square-foot expansion. Awan Trust, also a local business, is expanding 75,000-square-foot manufacturing area. Tamco Corporation in Port St. Lucie with our agreement and our partnership with Port St. Lucie, local company. They had 50,000 square foot of manufacturing. They now have 400,000 square foot of manufacturing in Port St. Lucie, guiding that improvement there in the tradition area. So all of these opportunities are unfolding currently. We continue to do that, and we're proud of what we've done and how we've changed and moved into the manufacturing sector to make our economy strong.
Okay, next question starts with Mr. Zdowski. Federal and state congresses pass many laws that impact local communities. These laws do not necessarily take into consideration the specific needs and the circumstances of those counties and cities. Home rule grants some control to local governments to govern their own area, but it's often under attack at the state level. Do you agree with home rule? If so, how will you defend it? And if not, why?
Well, home rule is absolutely incredibly important to the local citizens of this county and all counties. There are situations, quite frankly, home rule is in the constitution of the state of Florida, and it's specifically stated there. What happens is unfunded mandates come down from the state, which actually puts burden on the local taxpayers for things that the state should be paying for. So those are challenges. I absolutely positively support home rule. And there are a number of areas, such as the, there's a couple of things, the Medicaid issues, the issues with, what's it, having a brain squeeze here. It's raining hard here, too. But anyway, there's a lot of unfunded mandates that come down to us, and home rule is incredibly important to us. So I'm a huge supporter of home rule.
Okay, same question to Ryan Collins. Do you agree with home rule? If so, how will you defend it? And if not, why?
Yeah, home rule is essential to what we want to do here in St. Lucie County and all counties across the state. The ability for our county's direct representatives to regulate issues, it's a longstanding policy, and it should be protected. We need to make sure that we're able to identify our needs and not coming from state or federal advice. It's got to continue to ensure that state overreach doesn't occur here, because we've seen what happens when that does. And municipalities need to develop their own identity. You know, like Port St. Lucie, they should be able to continue to create their own identity without being pressured from the state. Several years ago, there was a movement, a group, 750, that attempted to have St. Lucie County join on with them. It was seven counties over 50 years, and it would have really limited our ability to make our own decisions here locally if we would have joined into that. Thankfully, we didn't. There were some that were proponents of it, but there was lots of opposition from citizens, and ultimately it didn't go through. So I think it's important for us to have those controls. And as far as your question of defending it, it's working with the state representatives. It's working with the State House representatives, Toby Overdorf. It's working with Gail Harrell, Erin Graul. You know, these might change in the election, but it's being able to communicate closely with them and making sure that they're on the same page. And if something does occur with the discussion and the state legislature, that we have their ear and that they're going to fight for us and for our ability to make our own decisions.
Okay, well, gentlemen, we have come to the end of our questions. So it is time to move on now to closing statements. And we'll start with Ryan Collins.
All right. Thanks again for having me. Again, Ryan Edward Collins, lifelong resident here. I want to be a better representative for the people of St. Lucie County and the businesses. During this campaign, it's been a great learning experience. You know, I'm the guy that's out there talking to everybody about policy, hearing their concerns, listening to their questions, giving them answers, giving them updates on things, whether it's a trip to the grocery store, or kid soccer practice, whatever it might be. I enjoy those conversations. I love this county, win or lose. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be more involved. We want to see the best of what St. Lucie County can be. And I believe that's by being the best representative that you can to bring those concerns to the board. We have a lot of things that citizens feel that their voice isn't being heard. There's a lot of areas that haven't gotten the attention that they need, especially in District One, the position that I'm running for. So I think it's getting back to those people. I want to hold, you know, town halls on a regular basis, whether it's by Zoom or in person. I want to be accessible. I want to be accountable. And, you know, my lifetime here, my reputation, what I've done in the community, I feel like puts me in the right position to have a good pulse of what the community needs, what the concerns are, and be able to bring those and represent those on the board, which ends up with all the citizens benefiting the most, which is important to me.
Thank you. And closing statement, Chris Zdowski. Lose signal here. Mr. Zdowski, closing statement?
Okay, there it is. Hi, I'm Chris Zdowski, and you can learn more about me at chrisforcommissioner.com. I appreciate your support. Check me out there. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'm very proud of the efforts that I've made in District One specifically. District One is a very unique district. It has some of the older areas of the county that, when I took office, didn't have roads, didn't have drainage, didn't have lighting and some sidewalks. Other areas of the county are the beaches that are in District One. Of course, we've been challenged with the erosion and the cost to replace, and fighting with the federal government for a general review report, or GRR, to be able to find ways to put engineering in place to reduce the erosion on South Beach. The cost of erosion is difficult. But back to the areas of older Fort Pierce, I'm proud to say that over a 10-year period, I've been able to cobble together as much as $18 million in Paradise Park to pave roads, to provide the drainage, to remove stormwater from the canals that go to the lagoon. Been able to invest $600,000 to Harmony Heights to build roads that were not there when I took office. Replaced Sheridan Plaza Park, which was burned out back in the day when kids and gangs would hang out in that park. We've cleaned it up. We've done a lot in Paradise Park, in Harmony Heights, in Sunland Gardens. And we've paved a number of the roads, Juanita, Avenue O, Avenue M, Avenue Q. We replaced bridges at Juanita. And all of these investments were honed and partnerships were created to be able to put that money together and to get the support of the board. I'm very proud of what we've done. I look forward to seeing our economy prosper from all the efforts we've put in so far. And I want to do four more years to make sure that it continues. I'm Chris Zdowski. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you both for being here, Chris Zdowski and Ryan Collins, both candidates for St. Lucie County Commission, District One. Thank you for participating. And certainly, we thank everyone who's been watching and informing themselves in advance of the general election. Coming up, well, your last chance to vote would be November 3, and we certainly hope everyone does. Andy?
Thank you, everyone, for tuning in this evening. Apparently, my cameras decided to stop working. I had to swap that out to get the Facebook feed. So who knew? But I do want to thank Carol and the candidates for attending this evening and sharing your ideas and telling the citizens and voters about your vision for St. Lucie County. I want to thank all of the viewers that were able to join us on Facebook Live and those who will view this later on our YouTube channel. And thank you to the members, of course, for helping us produce the questions that we present to our county commissioners. Don't forget to, of course, don't forget to go to vote411.org. You can learn more about these candidates and other candidates on your ballot and the Six Amendments. Or you can learn about the Six Amendments in a nonpartisan, fact-based way by just going to our Facebook page or our website and registering for one of our events. We have two next week, one at 5:00, one at 5:30. The 5 o'clock one is for your drive home. You can just listen instead of your regular podcast listening experience for your commute by simply logging in. Or you can join us for happy hour on Friday, next Friday, at 5:00 or 5:30, whenever I guess we decide we're ready to go. So grab some girlfriends or some guy friends and get some drinks. And, you know, it's 2020 politics. You probably need a drink. So we hope that you'll join us for that. And again, thank you all for joining us. We'll see you very soon. Next week, we start again, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., two more candidate forums, and we'll see you then. Thank you, everyone.